... and Kat Chabot. And, um, Alston Music in the Park at Riverdale Band Shell, which is in the evening on, also on Sunday, featuring Days Gone By. And I believe this is all their last, uh, last hurrah before the end of the summer.
You know what, Councilwoman McClellan, thank you for that, and I'm very excited, but kind of sad in the same way, because summer's starting to, it's starting to crest on us as, uh, all these events start wrapping up. Are there any other members of council? Councilor Sainsbury, please.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just recently, we've all received our Fall and Winter, uh, Parks Recreation and Culture Guide, and it's for the winter of 2022 and 2023. And no one in New Tecumseh can say there's nothing to do in New Tecumseh. It's just full of things to do, and the staff have to be commended for the fine job they've done. And really, pickleball's here, there's all kinds of things for everybody now. So, please get out and enjoy things in the town of New Tecumseh. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sainsbury. Are there any other members of council? Thank you very much. Moving on to confirmation of the agenda. I'd look to the clerk to identify any items to add or delete to the agenda, please.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. There are no items to add or delete at this time.
Thank you very much. I need a mover and second, or please be resolved that the agenda for the council meeting held on August 22nd, 2022 be confirmed and circulated. Can I have a mover, Councilor Harrison McIntyre? Councilor Lacy? All those in favor, please? Thank you. I'll look to council now for disclosures of pecuniary interest. If any council member has a disclosure of pecuniary interest, you can identify it now, or if you find yourself in that situation, please raise your hand, and we'll acknowledge it immediately. I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much. Moving on to the adoption of council minutes. Be resolved that the minutes of the council meeting dated July 25th, 2022, and the minutes of the special council meeting dated August 18th, 2022, be adopted and circulated. Mover and second, please, Councilor Foster. Councilor Noe. Thank you, all those in favor. And that's carried. Thank you, council. Moving on to determination of irons requiring separate discussion. I'll look to the clerk to identify items for separate discussion and the reason thereof, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. The only item requiring separate discussion this evening is DS-1, Public Hearing Tax Write Off Section 357 slash 358 of the Municipal Act. There's a public hearing.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'll look now to council. Does any council members wish to identify any items for separate discussion? And I'm not seeing any. So, once again, I'll look back to the clerk. Could you please summarize all items identified for separate discussion?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. The only item for separate discussion this evening is DS-1, Public Hearing Tax Write Off Section 357 slash 358 Municipal Act. There's a public hearing. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So, be resolved that items on the Committee of the Whole Meeting Report and Committee of the Whole Working Meeting Report dated July 25th, 2022, including additional information of memorandums, with the exception of those items identified for separate discussion, be approved and the recommendations therein be adopted. And further, that communication items and any other item listed on the council meeting agenda dated August 22, 2022, with the exception of those items identified for separate discussion, be received and/or adopted. Could I have a mover and a second, please, Councilor Beatty? Councilor McClellan, you're okay with that? Thank you. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you. Now, we'll move into DS-1. And that's the public hearing, Tax Write Off Section 357 dash 358 under the Municipal Act. The purpose of this meeting is for staff to advise council the 2022 cancellations, reductions, and refunds of taxes under Sections 357 and 358 of the Municipal Act, and to allow members of the public to provide input. Staff have advised council of report number FIN, F-I-N, 2022 dash 29, have advised the property owners of the information provided with the finance report in accordance with the notice provisions in the Municipal Act. No property owners have registered with the clerk's department to participate in the meeting. And as I look out in the audience now, I don't see any hands going up. And that's correct. Thank you. So, we have a motion before us. Be resolved that report number FIN 2022 dash 29 be received. And further, that applications for write-offs included as attachment number one to report number FIN 2022 dash 29 pursuant to Sections 357 and 358 of the Municipal Act be approved. Councilor Jebb, please. Sorry, Councilor Foster. Move in and second, and that, please, all those in favor. And that's carried. Thank you very much. Deputations relating to new matters from the council minutes and meeting, we don't have any. Consideration of items held for separate discussion, we have none, so I'll just fast-forward here. And I'm going to move on to the bylaws. Madam Clerk. So, be resolved that the following bylaws be read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Bylaw 2022 dash 086, 2022 dash 087. And that'll be the bylaws tonight. Could I have a mover and a second, please? Councilor Foster? Councilor Harrison McIntyre? All those in favor, please? That's carried. Thank you. Any information for general information? We have nothing new. We have no public notices. So, we have our confirming bylaw. Be resolved that bylaw 2022 dash 088 confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting on August 22, 2022 be read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Councilor Beatty? Councilor Sainsbury? Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And to not break with tradition, adjournment. Be resolved that the meeting adjourned at? Council Jebb?
Uh, 6:12, Your Worship.
Thank you. So, that'll be moved by Councilor Jebb, and seconded by Councilor Noe. You're okay with that, Councilor Noe? Thank you very much, and all those in favor. And that's carried. Thank you. Please, we will be moving on to our committee meeting now. Let me just take a second, please. Sorry, it just takes me a minute. It's been a couple of years since, uh, we've reverted back to this process. Anyhow, welcome, everybody. Thank you for staying. I appreciate that. We're moving into our Committee of the Whole meeting. So, we'll move to confirmation of agenda. I'd like to look to the clerk, please, to identify any items to add or delete to the agenda, please.
There are no items to add or delete this evening, Your Worship.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of council, are there any items? Sorry, I'll move on to the recommendation for that first. So, our recommendation is that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting held on August 22nd, 200, be confirmed and circulated. Can I have a mover and a second, please? Councilor Foster? Councilor Lacy? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Disclosures of pecuniary interest? Council, does any member have a disclosure of pecuniary interest? Please declare it now. If you find yourself in that situation, please raise your hand, and we can address it immediately. Thank you. Now, I'll look to the clerk for determination of items requiring separate discussion, please. Madam Clerk?
Um, thank you, Your Worship. The only item requiring separate discussion this evening is CW-11, Hillcrest Dog Park, written motion from Councilor Noe, and we have several deputations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll look to council now. Do any members of council wish to identify any items to be polled? I'll go in the order I saw. Councilor Foster, please.
Uh, CW-11, sorry, the poll. Uh, CW-41, please. And CW-53.
Did you catch all those? I believe Councilor Foster, 11, 41, and 53. Am I correct?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Foster. Councilor McClellan, your card was up next, please.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to poll CW-44 and CW-42, please.
Thank you. Steph, okay, thank you. Sorry, it's all 42, that's the thing. Councilor Noe, please.
Um, CW-52, please.
Thank you. Any other items to be polled by members of council? I'm not seeing any. I'd like to ask the clerk to please summarize all items identified for separate discussion.
Um, thank you, Your Worship. If I can just ask, Councilor McClellan, um, for the second item she polled, was it CW-51?
I polled CW-44 and CW-42.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Items for separate discussion are as follows. CW-11, Hillcrest Dog Park, written motion from Councilor Noe. We have several deputations. CW-41, Taxi Cab and Limousine Bylaw, request for deregulation. CW-42, Bylaw Amendment, Public Speaking at Committee of the Whole. Uh, CW-44, a bylaw to amend by law 2021 dash 140, procurement policy bylaw. CW-52, Honda Foundation Grant Agreement, Extension of Accessible Trail in Riverdale Park, Collaborative Agreement with the Nottawa Saga Valley Conservation Authority, and CW-53, Albert Street Comming Assessment and Strategy.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Sorry, Councilor McClellan?
I polled CW-44.
I believe that was identified.
Yeah, CW, CW-44, a bylaw to amend by law 2021 dash 140, procurement policy bylaw.
But there's no harm in ever checking.
My apologies, that was completely my mistake. Uh, CW-54 is the one I wanted to pull, and continue to read it wrong the whole entire time.
Okay, so, we'll remove 44, and we'll add 54. Does that work? Thanks, Councilor McClellan. Okay, thank you, council. So, we have a recommendation that all the items not identified for separate discussion be received, and the recommendation is there and be recommended to council for adoption. Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Foster? Second by, Councilor Noe? All those in favor, please? And that's carried. Thank you very much. So, our first item on the agenda is CW-1, which is the Hillcrest Dog Park. We have a few individuals that have registered tonight to speak. So, what we would ask politely, please, if you want to come to the podium, um, we'll turn the microphone on for you. You have seven minutes for your delegation. So, the first person we have on the list is Jen Meserve, the Friends of Hillcrest Park. So, Jen, would you?
Hello, and welcome.
Thank you. Uh, forgive me, I build cars at Honda for a living, so PowerPoint presentations are not maybe my forte. Uh, I'd like to thank council for allowing me to speak today. I would also specifically like to thank councilors Noe, Jebb, and McClellan, who joined our meeting on August 16th at the park. You can attest to the number of people from our community that attended the 9:00 AM weekday meeting to voice their concerns and support the effort to remove and relocate this dog park. Today, I represent a small group of residents that have come together over the last two weeks. Although Friends of Hillcrest Park is a new and small group, I would like to remind council that a far greater number of community members that reside directly surrounding the park have signed a petition to support the removal of the off-leash dog park from Hillcrest Park and its relocation to a more appropriate area. Specifically, 172 community residents signed our petition. In listening to the feedback from our community, our group has organized the concerns related to the dog park into three major categories. No safe passage, the elimination of a multi-use park, and finally, the location of the off-leash dog park in the middle of our high-density residential neighborhood. Off-leash dog parks are a popular destination for dog owners. We anticipate an increase in vehicle and pedestrian traffic on the three streets that abut Hillcrest Park. Unfortunately, our streets lack sidewalks to create a safe passage for pedestrians. This, coupled with the absence of a parking lot, will force park patrons to park their vehicles on our streets. And our older streets are far more narrow than the streets being built in newer subdivisions. There's a seven-foot difference in width. The narrowness of our streets caused the town to limit parking to one side of the road after a child fell from a tree in the park during the organized soccer game. Unfortunately, emergency services were delayed in attending to them because the parked cars on both sides of the road prohibited the EMS vehicles from accessing the park. The increase in vehicle and a lack of suitable designated parking spots creates a dangerous environment for the pedestrians on our road as people continue to park on both sides of our street. I would like to add that on top of all the children that visit our park, our community contains two supportive living homes with people, for people with developmental disabilities, and several elderly people who use our streets to walk, for exercise, and visit with neighbors daily. There is also an elementary school bus stop located on Cow and Ave at the park. Parents' vehicles line the streets in the morning and the afternoon. Where the stop was located in previous years is exactly where the entrance of the bo, of the dog park currently. The park is also heavily used as a throughway for students from both Alston Union and St. Paul's Catholic School. The students walk through the park and up this walkway to Gray Ave to and from school each day. The second major, major area of concern is the loss of our multi-use park. The dog park currently takes up more than an acre of the most versatile parkland. The area is flat and open, making it the best place for unorganized sports and recreational activities. This is where park patrons play spikeball, soccer, baseball, football, fly kites, do yoga, and gather in groups to share meals. The green space located on the north side of our park is uneven and hilly and surrounded by fenced backyards, not ideal for sports. The second photo you see here is of a father and three young children trying to play baseball in the small area left between the dog park fence and the play structure. What happens when the ball inevitably ends up in that fenced-in area? Along the same theme, the measured distance between the dog park fencing and the play structure is 80 feet. Many of our neighbors vocalize concerns of the children sharing the park so closely with dogs. Specific concerns surrounding their children being afraid of barking dogs, children causing the dogs to become more excited and unruly, and the possibility of a child putting their hand in the fence resulted, while resulting in a dog bite. Additionally, our main source of shade is a mature tree line. The tree line has been encompassed by the dog park fencing, therefore rendering it useless to anyone seeking shade in the park. The third and final major area of concern is the location of this dog park in a high-density neighborhood. The construction of the fencing, which went in without any note, advanced notice to our community, okay, puts the dog park just 62 feet from the nearest home. It puts the dog park 72 feet from the next nearest set of homes. Other municipalities state that dog parks must be at least 150 feet to a commercial or residential property line. Consider how a dog park so close will negatively affect the homeowner's ability to enjoy their property. In addition, most municipalities direct that a natural buffer be between a new dog park and a residential neighborhood. Here, we see a view of our dog park in Beaton with a beautiful and significant natural buffer between itself and the nearest home. Hillcrest Park does not have this kind of tree line or vegetation on its borders. A major issue for those living near and using our park is the odor that will occur in the warmer weather, especially due to the increase in dog urine and feces, okay? Here, we can see the massive receptacle that we're putting in place for owners who do pick up after their dog. And for those who don't, as many area residents will tell you, Hillcrest Park floods and freezes over in the winter. What kind of soupy mess will the dog park look like come spring, and who is going to clean it up? The noise of dogs barking is also a concern. The park is open 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and during that time, our neighborhood could be inundated with barking dogs and owners correcting and calling their dogs. Members of our community, including some councilors, agree that 920 feet of galvanized steel fencing is unsightly and detracts from the natural beauty of Hillcrest Park. Local real estate agents have been quoted as saying that the dog park, as it is and where it is, will negatively impact resale value in our community. And finally, with successful off-leash dog parks should come a group of dedicated volunteers that monitor the enclosure for safety risk, mess, and owner compliance of the park rules. No such committee was bef, was formed before the construction began of the dog park, and our Hillcrest community is left worried that we will be forced to police the park and report issues, like this bag of dog feces that was left inside the dog park directly after it was built. But who should we report non-compliance to? Our town does not have specific bylaws governing the use of an off-leash dog park yet. Our solution, okay, our solution to these three major concerns is simple. We request that council see to the removal of the off-leash dog park in Hillcrest Park, and we request that our next elected council create a committee to study successful off-leash dog implementation and to hold open dialogue with our community. We request that those who are making the decisions regarding our parks review the Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan Report from January 2018 before any construction begins, and I quote from the recommendation of Section 7.1.D., "Develop a policy and a program to redevelop older parks, renewing facilities to meet current and projected needs of the catchment area. Develop a standard process to communicate with and engage residents in planning for redevelopment of existing parks." Thank you.
Sorry, Jen. Jen, there might be some questions from, although you don't have to answer them, but there might be some questions from members of council. So, uh, just before you take a seat, if that's okay. Um, are there any questions for clarification? Uh, sorry, Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Jen, for your detailed presentation. I believe you and I spoke on the phone at length about this. Of your 172, maybe this is not a fair question, but do you believe the consensus of all 172 people is that that dog park should be removed? Or, or you see an opening for versatility from, from your position?
So, our petition specifically stated that we're looking to remove and relocate the park, and that's what the people who signed our petition, that's what they were signing for.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, uh, the people that we reached out to over the course of a few hours on a, on a weekend were the, the members of our community. We didn't set up in a parking lot and just request things. These are in our community.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Jen? Sorry, Councilor Sainsbury?
Well, thank you, Jen. Um, the people that you did have sign the petition, are they dog owners or non-dog owners?
Well, I'm a dog owner. And, uh, actually, many dog owners did sign the petition. In fact, even, uh, yesterday, standing over with our neighbors, we had someone come up to us, and they had a poodle, 96 pounds, apparently. And I thought, oh, no, she's coming to say I want this dog park. And in, instead, she came up and, and addressed us and thanked us for bringing this forward to you because she doesn't want the dog park in this neighborhood, she wants it relocated somewhere where, um, it won't affect a residential neighborhood. So, there are, there were many, many dog owners that signed this petition, uh, and I am, I'm just one of them.
Thank you very much, Councilor Noe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Jen, for your presentation, and also to all the residents that showed up to that meeting on, uh, on Tuesday. And it was a good turnout, and, uh, we listened to the concerns of the residents, and that's why it's back here to council tonight. So, uh, we're going to go around the table and get some input from council members, and, uh, we'll make a decision. There's a written motion on the floor. So, uh, after all the comments are made from council, or the audience, or whatever the case may be, we'll entertain the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noe. Thank you, Jen. So, I'll be moving on to the next deputation, please. That'll be Connie Clark. Hi, Connie, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a nice presentation, because I actually just seen the notice this morning. So, um, and I just wanted to come in. Um, I'm actually, um, my position and what I want to talk to is actually leave the dog park. And for a period of time, as a, um, a test period, and we've put in 85% of the funds for this. It is, it is set that we can use it. It's all fenced in, there's just missing, you know, the, the nice stuff, the benches and the stuff that we can use it. I have been a member of this community, born and raised here, and I actually used to live in that neighborhood. I don't live there now, but I do walk my dog in that area all the time. So, I don't have all the, the notes and the numbers and everything, but my suggestion is, is that instead of just ripping it up and wasting that money and, and waiting a whole nother year for an opportunity for us to have, um, a space where we can have our dogs off-leash and meet other dog owners and, and work it, is to spend ma, to, to set an amount of time, uh, open it as-is, don't spend any more money, uh, open it as-is for, I don't know, month, two months, three months, maybe till the end of the year, and then revisit the concerns that the, the residents that are local have. I know that my kids played soccer in that field when they were younger, um, and all the cars were there. And I don't know why their soccer's not there, it's probably because of the parking issue. But, um, that's my suggestion, and that's what I would like to propose, um, we amend the, the motion for, is to have it open for a period of time and test the, the concerns, and just make sure that they are valid before wasting the money and ripping it all out and moving it somewhere and having to wait a whole nother year.
Thank you very much. Uh, Connie, um, are there any questions from members of council? I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much for your deputation.
Thank you.
I know there's a lot of people in attendance tonight, and we have two registered, uh, but at this moment, I'm going to offer the microphone up to anybody here that would like to make a comment. Um, you're, you're not obligated to by any means, but there is an opportunity for members of the public. We like to encourage that. So, if anybody would like to quickly step up, give your name, uh, I'll go with this gentleman first. If you'd like to come up and make a comment, just, just give us your name for the record, please.
Sure. Uh, my name is James Doucette. Uh, I'm glad I got to go next, after what you said. I had the exact same suggestion, that we've already spent so much tax money building it. If you gave it a year to see how it went, if you have to spend the 40,000 that I'm, sorry, that I'm reading it costs to take it down, we could do that in a year, but some of the concerns, well, very well presented, like, you know, the, the odor. I frequent 180 Parsons, which is apparently not actually a dog park, but everybody goes there, uses it as a dog park. When you walk up to throw the garbage in the garbage can, you can smell it. From two feet away, nobody can smell anything. Everybody picks up after their dogs. We've even had cases, you know, like, we're a bunch, group of adults chatting, you don't notice your dog, somebody else will point it out. Or if I'm cleaning up my dogs and I notice another one that somebody missed, I pick up that one as well. But, my thing is, we're supposed to be a community, and everybody seems to be out to get each other. I have to drive past a school every day to go to work. My kids are all grown up, I don't have to deal with public schools, but I have to drive through the 50 or 100 cars that are all parked on the side of the road, the people crossing back and forth, and I understand that. That's part of living in a subdivision, that's part of living in a community. We want these services. People want to have a dog park. Somebody's going to be put out a little bit, but that's part of being in a community. We all help each other out, you know? People are all complaining on Facebook about the dog feces all over the streets. If there was a dog park, less of it would be on the streets. There is no odor beyond two, three feet past the garbage can. Everybody helps each other out in the dog park that we're currently using, but apparently it's not actually a dog park. We do need somewhere to use it. I lived on Hayden Avenue for the first four years I moved to Alston. I'm a runner, I run around town, I run by that thing every day. I maybe saw five people using that park. I'm not saying they don't use it, but it's not nonstop. And there are plenty of parks, there's plenty of, the Splash Pad is just down the street, there's lots of places for people to go. There is zero places for a dog park. We want it. It's going to inconvenience somebody, but let's all be a community, let's all help each other out. I'm sorry if it's your house that's right across the street, but maybe leave it in for the year, find out if, if everything they're claiming is true. You know, the, the, the cars on the street, there's never more than five or six cars parked when I go to take my dog over to the, the unofficial dog park. There aren't 50 cars. There's 50 cars in front of every school all day, but not in front of the dog park. Try driving down Shepherd Avenue. It's nothing but cars on the streets. So, why four or five more cars parked in front of Hillcrest Park is going to be an issue when everybody parks on the streets? And, you know, I can't back out of my driveway, there's always a car across the street. When I back out, I have to be careful not to hit the car of the people parking on the streets. But, we're a community. We put up with that for each other.
Well, thank you for those.
Give the dog park a chance.
Thank you for those comments. Um, I noticed there was one other gentleman, so if you would like to, uh, just, please put down your, write down your name and identify yourself at the podium for the public record.
My name's Adam Monroe. I'm actually a dog owner, and I am one of the residents that live very close to the fence line of the dog park. This morning, I actually took my dog for a dog walk, and I would like to just go off of saying, on my walk this morning, making my way around the loop of the fence line, I came across three different piles of feces that weren't clearly picked up. I came across three different piles of feces that weren't clearly picked up. This one, I wish I had on PowerPoint, but you can tell it almost made its way to the garbage bin. That's kind of good. I mean, we can work better on that for the future. This one's on the corner post of another fence line, okay? This is on another corner of a fence line. That's three in a row in one morning. I think that kind of proves the fact that unfortunately, there are going to be the people that ruin it for others that do take care of their dogs. I'm personally one of those people that take care of my dogs. I'm personally someone who loves and enjoys taking my dog to a dog park. Before moving to Alston, I lived in Burlington with my fiancee, and at the time, we were super excited because our dog was brand new, he was a puppy, and in our building was directly attached a dog park. Awesome, this looks amazing, it's going to be so much fun. Well, we moved. The only reason we moved is because it got to the point where unfortunately, we couldn't have our balcony door open at night, we couldn't enjoy our patio, we couldn't have windows open in the summertime, we were on the seventh floor that directly overlapped the dog park. Within one summer, that grass went from green to beige to brown to dirt. When you start to use a designated area, I can tell you and let you know, yes, the odor is a real thing. To say otherwise is the most confusing thing for me to understand. It's, you go somewhere and you do your business constantly in the same spot, it will smell over time. I have experienced it, I have moved from it, I had to get away from it. When I first moved to Alston with my fiancee, our very first night in our new backyard, we sat out there, and we looked at each other and said, wow, this is nice, finally no more stench. It does happen, I just want to make that so clear, through experience, the noise, it does happen. The amount of times that Lauren and I would have to go outside and say, can you guys please put the dogs inside for the night, can you please stop using the park, was on an uncontrollable level. It got to the point where security would constantly be getting involved, neighbors in the building would constantly be going outside on their backyard porches or their patios, kindly asking people to leave. And unfortunately, this is another scenario where a few ruin it for the good. And I believe that there are a lot of good dog owners in this community, but there will be those, anywhere you go, that will ruin it for them. It got to the point where people started getting pretty upset with that, and thank God, we moved away from the noise as well, because it was all throughout the mornings, throughout the nights, there was actual legal hours of when, the bylaws of when that dog park was allowed to be used, they weren't ever followed. It was exhausting. Another thing, I think there's a very lost view on the fact that, you know, everyone's talking about Facebook this and Facebook that, I couldn't agree with the gentleman before me even more. I got super excited moving to a small town, this should be all about coming together as a community, this should be about agreeing on a topic, or trying to find ways that we can come together on a solution. Unfortunately, there's those that are very opposed to it, or those that are very for it. Instead of trying to find a way that it works for everyone, it's got to be this weird battle where someone has to be right. I don't believe that a dog park should be taken away from anyone, but I do believe that the people that it will impact, and the families that it will impact, and the families that have invested in the community that they moved to, should be also listened to. You know, it's got its downfalls, it's got positives, but this isn't the area for it. I can tell you right now, if I paid the price I did for my house, I probably would have walked away seeing a huge chain link fence that resembles a penitentiary outside my front window, day in and day out. You know, Parkland, that was one of the biggest things for me, I'm starting a family in about a week or two. That park was in my vision when I purchased my home, seeing my kid run around there and play there. And we can compare all we want about who sees what, and at what time of the days we see what. Again, I think that's one of the positives about being directly across from it is, you know, you don't just see it when you pass it, as a passerby or someone who lives three blocks away or four blocks away, you see it constantly, it's outside your front door, it's outside your front window. I can tell you right now, I see kids all the time playing there, I see families gathering, I see kids learning how to.
Adam, you're just about out of time, so.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm going to wrap it up.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it's one of those things where I envisioned that with my own family as well, and it hurts a little bit to see that getting taken away. All I'm asking is, please help understand where we're coming from, we want a dog park, I want a dog park, I don't want it to negatively affect my decision in moving to a small community.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming up and speaking, I appreciate that, I don't see, Mr. Lewis, you want to come up and take a minute or two? And then we'll move on to council's deliberation and decision on that motion before us, please. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name is Bill Lewis, and I'd like to thank council for allowing me to speak. I actually just have a question, I'd like to ask Counselor Noe, if he could explain the process of the funding regarding this dog park. There seems to be a misconception that it's directly taxpayers' money, and I understand that it's not. So, would you be able to speak to that, counsel?
Counselor Noe, if you'd like to answer, or do you want to direct to?
I think, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that we should direct that to Parks and Rec.
Thank you. So, Director Burton, could you please answer Mr. Lewis's question on the funding, where it came from, and where we're financially sitting today?
Three U worship to Counselor Noe, I actually don't have that information offhand as to how it's funded, I know it was included in the budget, I believe it's from the Parkland Reserve Fund, but I'll, I can look at it and get an answer back to you.
I will then go over to the GM, as I see she's going through her paperwork, it's a very legit question that Mr. Lewis has asked, and you know what, Madame Bedford, if we have to come back to it, we can. And, Mr. Lewis, we'll get you an answer before we leave.
My understanding is that that was one of the reasons that got passed through council, because council, or some members of council, were concerned about taxpayers funding the bill for, you know, a park that's part of a recreational program, for dog owners anyway. So, that to me is where the problem sort of started, and it went downhill from there. Anyway, I'd also like to ask, I know there wasn't a need study done, but I've been hearing from people here tonight, actually, about, oh, I don't know, the park at Parsons, and the park in Beaton, it hardly has anybody there, you know, you have to go at a certain time, maybe to catch people using it much. And so, to me, a need study might suggest that maybe there's not the great, great need for an off-leash dog park that is, we're hearing about, especially one that's over an acre big. And, of course, the question of location is the strongest point in my mind. I don't understand at all how anybody, anybody could think that the location for that dog park is the correct location. It befuddles my thinking, that you guys would go ahead with something like that without any input from the public, and put that through, and not even let us know it was being built. We woke up Tuesday morning with all the machinery that came in there, flatbed truck, all the materials, two work crews, and boom, it was up in two days. And like my wife says, we didn't even know what it was. And then we find out later that it's a, it's a dog park. So, anyway, I would appreciate the information regarding the funding, if that's possible. And I'd just hope that everybody considers the impact of what this park, this off-leash dog park is going to have within a highly, fairly dense residential area. Right now, we have Parsons Place that's being used, we have Treetops, that is going to probably be an excellent off-leash dog park, with all the amenities, it's, I understand from Mark McCag that it's in a bush-like setting, so it won't be affecting anybody close by, because there isn't anybody close by it. And I'd also like to say that if, I know I'm running out of time.
Do you have an answer to your question?
Okay, well, I'd also like to say that if Tree Park becomes a destination park, like it suggested that it will be, and these other areas around, like Parsons and Beaton, and there's another one in town, and people also use the scrub land north of Shepherd Avenue now, and east of Boyne Street, that if people think that they have a right somehow to be able to walk to their dog park, I would suggest that they're pretty privileged to think that, because dog parks probably, just by nature, are drive-through places. So, that's what I think, and I appreciate you listening to me, and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and I believe we do have an answer, though, I looked at the Director Burton, could you provide an answer on the financing, please?
Three U worship, that's correct, we do have an answer. The identified funding source for this project was cash in lieu of Parkland Development Charge Reserve.
And can you explain what that means, cash in lieu of Parkland, so that people and our residents understand? Thank you.
I'll give a first stab, and if my finance folk want to add more technical terms, they can, but when developments come forward, each one has a responsibility to offer up a certain amount of Parkland space as part of the development. Based on their development type, sometimes, actual Parkland green space isn't warranted or available, and then the developer's responsible to provide cash in lieu of that Parkland space.
Thank you Director Burton. Okay, I'm going to open it up to council, sorry Counselor Noe. Did you want to go first?
Sure.
Or do you want me to go to Counselor Foster? It's up to you.
Yeah, I'll go first.
Okay.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Okay, I'm going to, like, I explained the process at the Tuesday morning meeting, how all this took place. Residents from Ward One, all residents, phoned me and asked for a dog park. My job as a counselor, I bring it forward to council for the budget, and it goes around the table, and council approved the project. From there, it goes to Parks and Rec. Yes, we should have posted it, I believe that 100% to the residents, to keep them informed what is going on. We made a mistake, I'm sorry about that. However, we have to deal with this now. When I went out there and saw the size of the dog park, I was shocked, I was amazed. It was too big in my eyes. So, that's why it's here tonight, like I said before, it's in front of council, and we will make a decision tonight whether the park stays or it goes. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Counselor Noe, so I'll open up to council deliberations. We do have a recommendation that is in front of council tonight, that will be debated on, it'll be amended, changed, voted on. So, Counselor Foster, you had identified, I'll hand the floor to you, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Having spoken to residents on both sides of the situation, we have a park that's already in place, we have an amount of money that's spent, and clearly, there's a number of issues. I want to propose something that I believe will find some middle ground. And, in that, I think the only way to find that is to ask staff to look deeper and poll residents on a, some might say this should have been done before, and they would be right in that, but I think now that we already have the park in place, we need to look and really determine is that, is the need there? And establish those things, first of all, before we just wholesale rip this down and find ourselves with a thousand feet of fencing, and a whole bunch of posts, and look at something else. And further, as part of the due diligence, as I spoke to Mr. Lewis today, I think it would be incumbent upon us also to look at other areas within the geographical area to identify something possibly, and I speak geographical area being, you know, a kilometer or two from its current location, so we don't confuse that as looking into different parts of the town. As far as dog parks, I live, not as close as some of you residents, to Parsons Road, I can see it out my front window, and I go there quite often myself. I can assure you that early on, there seemed to be a bit of traffic. People seem to govern themselves in a way that if they go there at seven o'clock in the morning, or eight o'clock, or two o'clock, and they notice it's busy, they adjust their schedules to compensate for that. So they find a time that doesn't work, so there clearly is no issues with traffic, it's well-used from people all over the municipality, I know people come from Briar Hill and Greenbrier all the way through town. So, my proposal would be, if the will of council is such, that we take a more moderate approach to this, ask the Parks and Recreation to essentially do the due diligence that should have been done, and report back in a timely fashion, that being four to six weeks, so this issue does not drag on, and look to find a compromise solution. I leave that for council's deliberation.
Thank you Counselor Foster. Are there any other comments? Counselor Sainsbury?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Greenbrier, we have many dogs in Greenbrier, and the roads there are also 21 and a half feet wide, and it's very difficult for parking in order for emergency vehicles to get through if cars parked on both sides. But many of the people go at all different times of the day, they go to Beatty Pinerie, they go to the Gibson Hills, they go to the Parsons Road Dog Park, and eventually, there will be one at Treetops that will be utilized probably by some of the people of Greenbrier, because it will be in closer proximity and not quite so far to drive. So, I think people just need, maybe we need a map, I'm not sure if we have a map where the dog parks are and could be utilized on our website, I'm not sure about that, I haven't looked it up, because I don't have a dog, so I don't have the problem. But anyway, that was just a, for instance, that I think there's more than what people think there are that could be utilized. And we do need to look at things that were dead-end, streets come, and it's private, and maybe there's a farmer's field to the north, if we could do a lease agreement with somebody who wouldn't object, and they can keep on farming with their hay and their whatever, and just go around whatever the size of the fence is, and we would pay for a lease to utilize that sort of thing for a dog park until such time as they give notice that they're ready to change the use of that land, or to sell it to somebody else, and that sort of thing. So, I know we have a lot of streets that dead-end up at the end of town there. So, it's just a thought, thank you.
Counselor Lacy?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I've heard from both sides of the argument as well, and I kind of agree with Counselor Foster's, but one thing I'd like to add, is I'd like to see the financial impact in that report back from staff. If we're looking at alternate locations, and that, I want to know how much we've already spent, how much we can recuperate from some of the costs if we do move it, and what would be the final costs in moving it. I mean, we had a budget of $125,000 for this, I just don't want to see it escalated if we're moving it from one location to another to, you know, $150,000, $175,000.
Thank you Counselor Lacy. Counselor, I forgot your Counselor Foster, I thought I would, so, no, you go ahead, you haven't had a chance, Counselor Beatty, please.
Thanks Deputy Mayor. And I just wanted to take a moment, too, to say thank you to the residents that reached out to me over the phone and over email over the last few days. I'll admit, I had to go back in history and find out, or revisit what actually happened, because my memory was a little cloudy. So I went back to the December 1st budget working session, December 1st, 2021, and if you haven't watched it, I strongly suggest that you go and watch it. And if you could make it through the first 90 minutes or so, you'll make it to the item that we're discussing tonight. And you'll notice that there was one poor soul that couldn't get a word in for the life of him, he had his yellow card up a few times, he was trying to flag people, and that was Beatty. But Beatty couldn't get a word in that night, and when the vote went down, it happened to be 9-1. And the one vote that was no happens to be the guy that's talking right now. And since I have the floor now, I'll just talk about a couple of the reasons that I would have brought up, had I had the time then. We had just put one in, in the community of Beaton, there are other many options locally, they've been talked about tonight, Gibson Hills, Beatty Pinerie, many others, and they are certainly popular. And there's another one that's 10 acres, that's opening in Treetops this coming fall. So, I'm also a firm believer that we definitely do not need three of everything. And I also have learned over the years that if you get a few emails from residents that are concerned on one street, and the street has 100 houses, you can look at those six emails and say, maybe there's a concern, as long as you don't ignore the other 94. And I think that might be what happens here, is that we hear from residents that think it would be a great idea, and of course, enough members of council would sign on and think it's a great idea as well. But, as it's been talked about, the polling, the research, just wasn't done. And so, that's why I sort of, that's why I had to vote no. I would revert back to the Parks and Recreation and Culture Master Plan that's been talked about tonight. Those are the documents and the studies that we need to refer to whenever we do things like this. The other thing I would mention is for my time on council, I've sat the entire time on the Property Standards and Canine Control Committee, and I sit on that committee with Deputy Mayor Norcross and Counselors Noi, Lacy, and Foster as well, and I sat during the last term. And it's the only committee of council where we sit as judges. And I can tell you that sitting on, in some of those meetings, you can, or hearings, you're in some very, at times, emotionally charged circumstances. Some very close calls, some near misses, some very tense situations, and unfortunately, some terrible accidents that can happen. And, you know, it's, when you see the pictures of the injuries that can happen, the first thing you think about is how can this be avoided? How could this have been avoided? And if there's one thing I've learned, is that children running at large and dogs running at large do not mix, especially in a large, highly dense residential community. I think there's merit in having dog parks, certainly, but I think that we really should have put a little more forethought into the location. And I'll segue into location and make one last point. In terms of alternate locations, I wouldn't support I wouldn't support relocating the park or looking at alternate options. I think if it can work here, or if there is some way of getting some compromise or a trial period, great. If at the end of the day it doesn't work, take it out. The next council can decide where the dog park should be, and I think we should just move on from there. One thing I don't want to do is shop for areas of prime real estate in our settlement communities like Alliston, Beaton, and Tottenham because those are prime areas for infill development. And infill development is the one thing that will save New Tecumseh from the sprawl that everybody is fearful of when they move to communities like this. So we need to give serious consideration to intensification and infill development, and look to some of the peripheral areas for some of these more recreational and cultural uses. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Beatty. Counselor Jeff?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like that the staff would review the Treetops Dog Park when it is going to be opened, and do a trial, as it was suggested, for two or three months. Next council can determine if they want to take the fencing down and maybe move that fencing over to the Treetops Park. Maybe that's a possibility, that we repurpose that fencing if it isn't going to work. But I agree that give it a trial of two to three months and see what happens, and if it's not working, it's not working, and we shut it down.
Thank you, Counselor Jeff. Counselor Foster, sorry, Counsel, are you sure? Okay, thank you. I just want to be fair to all members of council. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. So Counselor Foster, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just one more thing to add is that if Director Burton wants to speak, just in very general terms, about the amount of money that's been committed to that project so far, I think that will help maybe to understand that a knee-jerk reaction to immediate removal does not make it any better than the knee-jerk reaction that got us into this mess. So to me, the, all the other issues are valid, but to me, I think there needs to be a little bit more due diligence done in a very expedited period of time, not kick this down the road and make a decision that is truly informative of the residents in the area. So to Director Burton, if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Foster. Director Burton, would you answer, please?
Through you worship to Counselor Foster. In terms of what has been spent to date, it's approximately $54,000 that has been spent on the fencing, the concrete pads, and any other work on site for the garbage and recycling receptacles.
Thank you. To answer your question, Counsel, thank you very much. Counselor McCollin? And then I would go to Counselor Noi because you have the final word. Thank you. So Counselor McCollin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think this situation clearly shows that communication is key. Communication when this passed in January, or I think we approved the budget in February, is of the utmost importance, and that is a failure on council's part. Obviously, we need a policy to be posting these things when we're changing community spaces because essentially, the residents are the owners of these community spaces. They pay the taxes, and the spaces are for them. So they need to know what's coming because that also gives them time for input, to send input to their council or council as a whole. Community outreach was lacking in this situation, and it makes me nervous because not everyone's going to be happy with the outcome, whatever it is, because some people want the park and some people don't want the park, and there's valid reasons on both sides. And it's going to be very difficult. But I think some community outreach is needed, and it's needed very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCollin. Counselor Harrison McIntyre, please.
Thank you. Through you worship to Director Burton. Of the 54,000 that's been spent, how much can be recouped and reused? And so what would be the loss at the end?
Through you worship to Counselor Harrison McIntyre. On the spot, trying to give you that number is a little difficult, but approximately, we feel 20,000 worth of material could be salvaged from that location and be able to reuse and relocate it to another spot.
Is that good, Counselor?
Yeah, and then the other point I just want to bring up was just to highlight what one of the deputations brought forward, which was, I think it was Jen, spoke to other dog parks and there being policies around the distance between residential areas or commercial areas. And the dog parts, I think she said it was 120 or 150 meters. So that's, you know, right now, it seems we may not have a policy, but as we normally do, we should look and see what other policies are out there and use those as good examples of best practices moving forward. And as everyone has said, you know, this is, this was an error on council's part to move forward so quickly without the due process that we usually engage in, and not following the, you know, the Parks and Rec Master Plan or looking to our staff to bring projects forward. You know, there's always the problem when this happens with, so we made a mistake, and now I think we're going to do our best to try and rectify that error.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sainsbury? And then I'm going to go to Counselor Noi.
Through you to Director Burton. Have we resolved the problem at Treetops? I think the NBCA and certain people had a concern. Is it going to be done before the snow flies, or is it going to be ready for next spring in the budget?
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Sainsbury. Treetops development is moving forward. They are starting the activity onsite in terms of the creation of the trails through the woodlot, and then they'll be culminating at the bottom of the hill where the dog park will be created, and then the access roads out. They're anticipating completion by year end, which would therefore mean the dog park would open spring of next year.
A supplementary?
Please.
Yes, the money that we have been able perhaps to salvage, which would be $20,000, can any of this material be used there because of the DCs for the park, or at least the parkland, park trust, however you do that? And it would still be the town's money, but the developer's building the park over there, so how would that work? When you're, it's two different, money belonging to two different people. Thank you.
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Sainsbury. You would add a great degree of difficulty to me to try and figure that out, but we could certainly sit with the developer, and I'm sure they would be amenable to the discussion of having material donated in lieu of payment of material for the park that we're paying for anyways.
Or get them to add another slide. Sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Lacy, and then, like I said, I'll go to Counselor Noi.
Just one last question on the numbers. 54K spent to date, 20K salvageable. To bring the park back to its original condition, would that include any additional monies, or is that included in the 20K that you're salvaging from the 54?
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Lacy. Depending on the level of which you wanted the park to return to, for example, the concrete pads and benches and shade structures that are proposed as part of that, including the waste receptacles, I would suggest leaving in place and potentially reusing. It's still a community benefit, but that would be the will of council, and I could tell you then what the cost would be to remove those concrete pads, and it would probably be some cost for that portion.
Thank you, Director. So Counselor Noi, you have a motion on the floor. How did you wish to proceed?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to put a question out to the residents while we have them all here. Like I'm trying to look at both ways, right? And I'm trying, because I get people in favor, people who are against. You know, you're here, you're against. I'm glad you're speaking your minds and stuff like that, but however, it's just a train of thought. Would the residents be interested in, say, the town staff drawing up a new plan for that park there, like making it smaller, whatever? Or you want it removed? I'm putting that question in your hand. Is that an idea, or is that?
I have no problem with community engagement, and if anything, I'm the one that probably deviated a bit when I opened it up to the floor. So what I would say to you, Counselor Noi, is I think we've heard from the residents, and you have a motion on the floor. Is there anybody that would like to make an amendment to that motion, or does anybody have any suggestions? I will look to Counselor Foster.
I've already made the motion of the amendments, that we take the original motion from Counselor Noi and add on that the staff conduct the due diligence, however you want to word it, but I would suggest conduct the due diligence should have been done prior to the erection of the park, and see where that leads us.
And I believe if council were to go down that route, we'd want to speak to residents within two kilometers of that park and go out there, so. And Counselor Noi, please confer with the residents. That's why we're all here. I guess what I was asking to you is Counselor Foster has put forward an amendment. procedurally, we have to follow this process. So Counselor Foster has put forward an amendment stating having the town staff go back out, speak to the residents, see if the dog park can re- relocate it, if it could be reconfigured. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Due diligence to me is all the processes that should have happened. The sizing, the location, whether it moves, whether it actually needs to be there, whether there's enough community support to justify it, which could remove in its full removal. So due diligence has 100 aspects to it. So that's why I use the blanket term, which allows the staff to do that due diligence that we neglected as a council to do prior to the installation of this park. So that would be my amendment. That can be voted on or supported or turned down.
Thank you. I'm just going to look to the clerk. Am I clear going forward?
Thank you, your worship. So the motion that has been put forward from Counselor Noi is very specific in that it's asking for it to be, to remove all works completed at the site and restore the area to natural grass area. So it wouldn't necessarily be an amendment. It would be a completely new motion because it contradicts, the amendment that's being proposed contradicts what the original intent is.
Thank you. That's where I was leaning towards it, too, is Counselor Noi could either leave this motion on the floor, or he could withdraw it and put forward a new motion. It would be up to you because it's a member's motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think that we should leave this motion here and have council vote on it. Then if it's defeated, then we'll come up with another motion in regards to reconfiguring the park and moving the location, if we can do that. Can we do that?
Sure, I'll check with the clerk. Yeah, sorry, I looked to the clerk. Just makes sure procedurally, we're on track here.
Yes, if council wishes, it can vote on this motion, and should it pass, then that's the direction. Should it be defeated, then council can consider another approach to the dog park itself.
Okay, thank you very much. So council, so just to be clear, everybody knows if this motion passes, if it fails, if it doesn't go forward, you have an opportunity to put another motion forward that Counselor Foster has suggested. So I'm going to read the recommendation that's on the floor here that's been approved. So recommendation is whereas council approved as part of the 2022 Capital Budget and Business Plan, the addition of a dog park to be located at Hillcrest Park in Alliston, and whereas the construction of the dog park took place this week, sorry, the week of August 8, 2022, and reached 85% completion, and whereas the local area residents expressed concerns over the location and a public site meeting was held on August 16, 2022, to receive feedback. Now therefore be resolved that council direct staff to halt the project complete, completion, remove all works completed from the site, restore the area to its original grass state, and further that staff be directed to determine alternate dog park location, report back to council, and anticipate a construction date in 2023. Do I have a mover, please? Counselor Noi, do we have a second there? Counselor Sainsbury, any comments or questions on the motion? I got Counselor Jeff.
Counselor Harrison McIntyre and I were just discussing, can we make an amendment to this motion that we take out that restore the area to its original grass state? Yeah, remove all works completed from the site. Yeah, the garbage cans, because the cement pads would be perfect for picnic tables, whatever. So if you just remove the fencing, basically, but remove all works completed from the site, period? Yeah.
Okay, so I'm noticing an amendment on the floor here that it'd be revised to just remove the fencing. Okay, and by looking around, I see the nods that everyone's in agreeance with that. Okay, thank you, council. You make the amendment, I believe Counselor Noi? Second to that amendment, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we're good with the amendment. You've recorded?
Yes, so you would have to vote on the amendment first.
Absolutely. No, just making sure. Sometimes I rush, so I apologize. So all those in favor of the amendment that was just proposed, please? And that's carried, and then I'll revert back to the original motion. Would you like me to read it in its entirety again? Thank you. So the recommendation is whereas council approved as part of the 2022 Capital Budget and Business Plan, the addition of a dog park to be located at Hillcrest Park in Alliston, and whereas the construction of the dog park took place the week of August 8, 2022, and reached 85% completion, and whereas the local area residents expressed concerns over the location, and a public site meeting was held on August 16, 2022, to receive feedback. Now therefore be resolved that council direct staff to halt the project completion and remove the metal fencing completed on the site, and restore the area to, or to just just stop it right there. That's what I was thinking, too. And sorry, it's on the fly here. And further that staff be directed to determine an alternate dog park location, report back to council, and anticipate a construction date in 2023. Everyone's clear on the motion that's before us? Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion, please? Oh, sorry. I apologize. Is there any comments or question? Counselor Foster, my apologies.
No problem. I think that this is all well-intended, but we've gone down a road here with no forethought. And now I think we're trying to create another bunch of motions on the fly to satisfy something that is not well-thought out. So it's really just a mistake compounded on top of another mistake, as I see it, as well-intentioned as it all is. So to me, I think you need to step back, need to admit your mistakes, which we've done, direct staff to go and look, because take the fencing down leaves the cement pads. I looked at those cement pads are right in the middle of a park. The next question will be, why did you leave two cement pads when the fencing's all down? So kids can fall down on a 10 by 12 cement pad in the middle of the park. So I don't think we're capturing all of what needs to be done. And if we're going to do something intelligent, I think the intelligent answer is to do what we first talked about and direct the staff to go bring back a report in a very short period of time so that if the decision is made to take the fence down, everything is captured, it's done accurately. That would be my comment. So I will not support this just because of the makeshift nature of the motion on the fly.
Thank you for those comments, Counselor Foster. I don't really want to open it up to another debate, so. You know, we have the comments there. Did you want to address the concrete pads? If not, I'm going to let it go. Thank you. Okay. So we have motion on the floor. All those in favor, please? Okay, so I count three, it does not pass. Okay, so moving on then, would somebody like to put another motion forward? Counselor Foster?
I will go back 15 or 20 minutes, or hopefully I will go back 15 or 20 minutes, or hopefully it's not been 40, because it seems like it's been three years. But I would go back to my original motion that simply says have staff conduct the due diligence as should have been done in the first place, report back in a short period of time, including polling the residents, so that we can make an informed decision that was void of being made back on December 1st. Thank you.
Counselor Sainsbury?
Through you to Counselor Foster, a short period of time is, it doesn't mean much. Do we have a sunset date? Like, what is fair? Ask staff?
I asked staff, Director Burton, and his comment was, there was two meetings in September and one in October, and that timeline seemed to be acceptable. So, I will ask that question to Director Burton.
Through you, Your Worship, to Counselor Foster. We'll do our best to hit that second meeting in September, which allows this council to both hear the matter and deal with it at the following council meeting in October.
Thank you, Counselor Burton. Counselor Harrison McIntyre, and I'm waiting for the clerk to write up the motion, so...
In the meantime, this means that this park will be available and open for people to use. Is that correct?
Well, that is a question. Right now, we have it that the park is closed. The park is not open. So, unless somebody wants to give direction, otherwise, the park would remain closed until this matter is resolved, unless somebody would like to change that. I'm not seeing anybody coming forward. So, yes, the park would remain closed then until this issue is decided by council. Thank you. I would then look to the clerk to... Did you capture Counselor Foster's motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship. Be resolved that council direct staff to conduct due diligence on the dog park location, including polling members of the public. And further, that staff report back to council at its September 26, 2022, meeting. Counselor Lacy had also mentioned about the financials, so I just need direction from Counselor Foster, if you would also like that included.
Counselor Foster, would you include that in your motion, the financials?
Transparency is paramount, so yes, please.
Thank you. That would be added as well.
And further, that staff include a cost analysis in the staff report to include complete cost for the project, money already spent, and costs to relocate the dog park if needed.
Thank you. Counselor Sainsbury?
Yes, clarification. One of the ladies that spoke tonight presented a petition that would save staff an awful lot of time going to the people. So, start with 172 names, I think it was, on that petition, and just see who's missing. It will save you... I don't know how you're going to do that, because a lot of them already have signed that they either want it or they don't want it, so...
How about we just give that to the director's discretion? Because quite frankly, I'd like to make sure that every door is knocked on, and I'd like to make sure that every resident is contacted, and that we have input from every single person within that two kilometer. But it's a great point, Counselor Sainsbury. So, do we have a second, please, for Counselor Lacy? All those in favor of the motion that's been proposed on the floor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Noe, did you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, my understanding is we're turning this back to Parks and Rec. They're going to reconfigure the park as we speak. And my question is, will it go back to the residents if they can turn this park down or not, or keep it? Is that correct?
Yes, actually, my understanding of the motion is that council represented with options on reconfiguration, moving that fencing, making it smaller, safety concerns, all the concerns that have been raised. Those options should come back to council, every single one of them. The input will come back from the residents. They'll be contacted. They'll be asked for their comments and concerns. Will be formulated in that report that will come back to council. And if I'm speaking at a turn, I would look, no, I'm getting the nod from the CAO, that yes, Counselor Noe, we will make sure that every resident within two kilometers is contacted, is consulted, and has an opportunity to have their input into this. And we're not looking for just one, my understanding from the motion, because we're not looking for just one option here. Two or three options, and also the option of, you know what? That's not the spot to be the dog park. So, you know, the clear viable option is to remove it then. And those options will come back to council. And I'm seeing nods from across the table. All right, so I will call about then. All those in favor of this motion, please? And that's carried. Thank you very much, council. Thank you to members of the audience. Okay, council, we'll be moving on to item CW41. That's the taxi cab and limousine bylaw request. Well, Counselor Foster pulled that, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In reading the report, I want to understand, so this is full deregulation, some of the options, alternative options would be make no changes to the current bylaw or leave the current bylaw in place. Is, I wonder about, my gut instinct is deregulation, but then I worry about with a small town, with not a lot of people, not a lot of competition, is that competition obviously may keep the price down and may impact the conditions in the taxis. If we go to full deregulation and we have no control over the drop rate and the mileage, is that we may see some price gouging? And I think for a lot of people that use taxis, there are people, I don't want to stereotype anything, but if you're in a taxi, it's probably because you don't have a car potentially. And I would hate to see someone price gouge that needed to use a taxi in town. So, if someone can speak to the advantages to deregulation versus what I'm sort of seeing as potentially partial deregulation, amend the fees to increase the drop rate and mileage, and aside from that, go no further.
Thank you. I'll go to Manager Glanville, if you want to address what the deregulation is, why they're looking for their pricing or flexibility to alter their pricing.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of committee, and address the question, the deregulation, the intention.
I don't think your mic's on.
Can you hear me, Your Worship? No?
You might have to, well, you've got lots of help coming your way. There you go.
Thank you, Director Burton. Through you, Your Worship, to members of committee, with deregulation, the pricing and the protection of the pricing is there in terms of the Ministry of Consumer Services. That's always a viable option. Competition will also be there to make sure that rates are competitive, otherwise, there won't be a successful organization. And if this becomes a critical issue, we can listen to the community in the future and revisit this and put another voluntary program in place.
Thank you, Manager Glanville. I'll look to Counselor Foster. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Director Glanville. I just read on page five of the report that it said in 2022, taxi cab companies made a request through staff to either increase the tariff fees they are permitted to charge to passengers or deregulate the industry from the town licensing program together. So, reading that statement, it would, you might interpret that, that if we were to allow them the fee increases, that would be enough for them. It did not seem as if they were insisting that deregulation happen. This seemed to be all about money related to cost of fuel, cost of maintenance, and everything else. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Through you, Your Worship, to member of committee, the support is for full deregulation, not being able to have to rely on a fixed rate. The fixed rate was not something they were interested in. They're more supportive of the deregulation approach.
Sorry, Counselor Foster, can you answer? If I may interject, my understanding is that Uber is playing a big part in the taxi cabs wanting to deregulate or having more control over their rates. Is there any truth to that, or that's not part of the equation? Okay, thank you. Counselor Foster, did you have a follow-up?
That was essentially the follow-up question was, what other, once you get past taxi services, what other services are there available for moving throughout town, void of, or the absence of the taxi business?
Manager?
Through you, Your Worship, to member of committee, there are transport options that are available publicly. There's a number of private organizations. There are some of those share-based platforms that are there as well. And it's hoped that once the level of the rate does get to a more competitive amount, it will bring more taxi businesses to town.
Thank you. Sorry, Jerry, I was just following with you. Thank you. I'll look over to Counselor Noe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's just a question. In order for these taxi cabs to receive their license, do they have to supply a safety certificate per vehicle, like, per year? So, they present that to the town, I believe, then we issue the license. Is that correct?
Manager?
Through you, Your Worship, to member of committee, yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry, Counselor Jeb, then I'll go to Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A question through to Manager Glanville. Does this affect the program that we have in place for residents that sign up for a rebate for taxi service?
Through you, Your Worship, to member of committee, it will not. I've talked to the engineering department, and they have enough to make sure that it's status quo in terms of that versary.
Thank you. Counselor Foster, then Counselor Harrison McIntyre, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would put out there that council consider option two, which is leave the current bylaw in place and amend the fees and charges by law to increase the drop rates to 370 and mileage to 250 a kilometer in order to bring ourselves consistent with other municipalities.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison McIntyre.
Thank you, Worship. I was just going to pop in and say that we need competition. The more competition we have in this town, the more affordable it will become. I can tell you that it costs $60 to get from Tottenham to Alliston. So, a round trip ticket costs you $120. So, price gouging? There's not much more room to go for a lot of people, but that's the real cost of it. And so, we need competition. We need public transportation. We need multimodal options. We need whatever we can give people, because it's not viable for most people to do or utilize.
Thank you for those comments. I think that's all members of council. So, when I look to the recommendation in the report, it looks like we were, it'll be recommendation report number admin 2022-31 be received. And further, that the bylaw is not changed. Bylaw 2005-010 will be in the taxi cab and limousine bylaw. Would that be correct? Because Counselor Foster, I believe your recommendation is just leave status quo.
See, I'm referring to option two, which was presented to us by staff. That's not my option. That's reading right from the option that was put in the staff report.
Thank you. So, then I'll look to the clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Whenever staff put forward a recommendation, it's at council's discretion whether or not you want to put it on the floor. Council can always opt to put something entirely different on the floor, which is what Counselor Foster is recommending. So, his motion would be that report number ADMIN 2022-31 be received. And further, that the fees and charges by law be amended to increase the drop rate to 370 and mileage to 250 per kilometer in order to be consistent with surrounding municipalities. So, it is at council's discretion which one you want to deal with first.
Well, thank you. I think we'll go with Counselor Foster's recommendation first, and you did a great job reading it. So, we have Counselor Foster's recommendation on the floor. So, moved by Counselor Foster. Counselor Noe, you'd like to second that? All those in favor, please? And that's, all those in favor? That doesn't carry? Okay, so then I'll revert back. We have a recommendation that is in front of us, and that is the report number admin 2022-31 be received. And further, that a bylaw be enacted to repeal bylaw 2005-010, being the taxi cab and limousine bylaw. And further, that the fees and charges by law 2021-123 be amended to remove the fees for taxi cabs and limousines. Do we have a move or a second for that one? Counsel McCollum, it's like my Counselor Beatty. All those in favor, please? Of course, Counselor Sainsbury. I apologize. Comments or questions, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If this proves to not work out the way that we had anticipated, we can always, the new council can always bring in a new bylaw, can they not?
Correct. I believe the procedure is for meetings of council.
If gouging is a problem, then we need to review it and rethink it and go back, but...
Yes, according to the procedural by law, it can be, it can come back, Counselor Sainsbury? Okay, so, sorry, Counselor Foster?
If I could just respectfully to one of my, one of the counselors who supports the deregulation, give me some insight into the thinking that if we deregulate and open up the industry when we don't have a lot of competition, with the cost of everything with fuel and gas and everything else, where there would be a better chance that more competition would drive the price down? Because that's just, that's just simply not the way economics dictate. So, the reason why I followed one of the alternative options as presented was to give some price stability to a system that's already in place. So, if somebody who votes in favor of deregulating would explain to me how in the short term that will help with fixed pricing, I would just like to understand respectfully.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. Counselor Harrison McIntyre, please?
So, what would happen would be I would call A taxi company, and I would say, how much is it for me to go from point A to point B? And they would give me a price, and I'd say, thank you. And then I'd call B, and I'd say, how much is it for me to go? Well, A is giving it to me for this price. Can you match that? And now they can, because it's not regulated. So, they have the option to be able to adjust their pricing, to give me a better price. And because I go grocery shopping every week and I need to use their services, I'll call them every week. That's just an example, how I would see it playing out.
Thank you, counselor. Okay. Last comment, Counselor Foster, then I'm calling the vote.
Thank you. That's, I hope that that actually happens. I really do. Thank you. But thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, council. All those in favor, please? And that's carried. Thank you very much, council. We're going to move on to item CW42. And that is our bylaw amendment, public speaking at committee of the whole, and that was pulled by Counselor McCollum. Counselor McCollum, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Hopefully, just a quick question. Are, will residents still be able to come to committee of the whole? And if they feel it necessary to speak on an item when they get here, they can still put their hand up at the beginning of the meeting like we used to do pre-COVID and be able to speak at the meeting? Or it's the only option to register online?
Thank you for that comment. I would go to the CAO, please. Oh, sorry. Madam Clerk, you're on the spot a lot tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through His Worship to Counselor McClellan, we are trying to get people to register online for the reasons in the report. However, there are options in the procedure by law available to council. If there are people in attendance that the public would like to speak, then there are provisions that they can do so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm just going to, as the order in which I saw them, so Counselor Sainsbury, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For people who don't have the internet, and I have many seniors that don't by choice, so can they phone and book it?
Yes, so it would work the same as it has for the last two years, where if people do not have a computer, they can access to fill it out. They can always phone the clerk's office, and we'd be more than happy to fill it out for them. They can also submit written comment if they choose not to come to a council meeting, and we would be happy to submit that to council as well, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sainsbury. Counselor Jeb, please?
That was the exact same question.
Well, thank you, Counselor Sainsbury. You were speaking on all three counselors tonight, so that's a job well done. So, we do have a bylaw in front of us, and the report admin 2022-32 be received. And further, that a bylaw be enacted to amend the procedure by law 2022-034 to provide the opportunity for members of the public to continue to register online through the town's website council portal, when requested to speak on any committee of the whole item, including planning, public meeting items, and/or to request a deputation to council. I move by Counselor Foster, second by Counselor McClellan. All those in favor, please? And that is carried. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, council. We are moving on to item now, C W five two. Just give me a minute to get ahead there, council. So C W five two is the Honda Foundation Grant Agreement, Extension of the Accessible Trail in Riverdale Park, Collaborative Agreement with the Nanosog Valley Conservation Authority. We do have a recommendation in front of us. Comments or questions? Councillor Noe, you pulled it. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I'm directing this question to director of parks. Sorry, Dad, I'm not picking on you. There's mention in the report that there's a plaque from, that's going to be posted or presented on the walkway from Honda. And have we done that yet? And the second question is that we receive money from provincial and the federal government regarding that project. So will that be posted to or not? That's my question.
Thank you, councillor Noe, to director Burton, please.
Sure. Through your worship to councillor Noe, I'll defer this to director Vatri as engineering's in charge of this project.
Thank you, director Vatri, please.
Through your worship to councillor Noe, with respect to your two questions, the plaque, it has not been posted at this point. It is part of the process. Once we had the, the trail established and all the fundraising had completed, we were going to get the plaque put up. So it won't be happening. With respect to funding, as outlined in the report, Honda is providing fifty thousand, or Honda, I'm sorry, the Honda Foundation is providing fifty thousand dollars towards the design. And then we had ISIP, which is the federal and provincial government, and they provided the vast majority of the, of the park or the construction of the park, linear parkway, which would be in the range of about eighty thousand, eighty percent.
Thank you, director Vatri. Is there a follow up councillor Noe?
Yes. Would that be also on the plaque? Fed funding and?
Okay, sorry, director.
Through your worship to councillor Noe, we will be reaching out to the federal and provincial governments. It's expected that the world will be on, will want to be on the park plaque. However, it will be up to them to decide whether they actually get on it or not.
Councillor Noe, I've never not seen the provincial or federal government want their names on a plaque. They, they want to make sure. So if there's no other comments or questions on this? Okay, thank you. So we have a recommendation, the report number E N G two zero two two dash two two be received, and that a bylaw be enacted to authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the appropriate documents and agreements for the execution of a collaborative agreement between the Nanosog Valley Conservation Authority and V C A, the Corporation of the Town and New Decoums of the Town, the Honda Canada Foundation, H C F, for a grant for the extension of the accessible trail in Riverdale Park, Alston, in accordance with the terms and conditions set out in report number E N G dash two zero two two dash two two. All subject to the town solicitor's final clearance. All those in favor, please? And that is carried. Thank you, council. We're going to move on to item C W five three, and I had that pulled by councillor Foster. Councillor Foster, comments, questions?
Yes, thank you, through yourself, deputy mayor, to director Vatri. On the bylaw, the very last page, if I go down and look at the bylaw, it refers to that schedule A parking prohibited be amended by deleting the following highways, Albert Street East North Side from Tottenham Road to Lauren Street. And then the next column, section, subsection B refers to Tottenham Road to Fletcher. Am I, I believe the area we were speaking of was Lauren Street to Fletcher, and I'm not sure why the addition of Tottenham Road. So if I've missed something, please feel free to correct me.
Director Vatri, please.
Through your worship to councillor Foster, that question actually came up earlier and it is, the bylaw is correctly structured. The intent is that we're removing the old parking restriction, which would have went from Tottenham Road to Lauren. Because we're going to allow parking between Lauren and Fletcher, we're going to just shorten it up to only Fletcher Street.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Harrison McIntyre, I believe you had a comment or question, please?
Yes, thank you. In the report that follows this report, we're, we're looking at Patterson Street. And Patterson Street, there's some consideration for cycling in the future. And I, my question is, keeping in mind the multimodal transportation plan that, that was just created, was there any cycling lanes considered for Albert Street instead of increasing the parking?
Thank you. Director Vatri?
Through your worship to councillor Harrison McIntyre, when the report was put forward by staff or reviewed by staff, we were looking to maintain the level of service which includes the on-street parking. And that's why we brought it forward in this particular fashion. If we were to go to a similar layout that was proposed, that is proposed for Patterson Street, we'd end up eliminating the parking because then we'd have cycling lanes on both sides of the road. And again, this was just for continuity of what is currently on the street. That why it was just being presented to council in this manner.
Thank you councillor Harrison McIntyre. Councillor Foster?
Thank you to councillor Harrison McIntyre, but there's a sidewalk on the north side of Albert Street, which goes up to just the east side of Downey. And when you cross the road, there's a lovely trail on the other side of limestone that travels all the way from there, east all the way to Tottenham Road. So the, that's why I didn't believe it was necessary to talk about bicycle lanes on the actual road because of our provisions already there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Foster. Okay, so we have, we have a recommendation in front of us, and further that staff be directed to prepare a budget sheet for the implementation of frontline mitigating measures on Albert Street as described in report number E N G dash two zero two two dash two three for council's consideration during two zero two three budget deliberations. And further that a bylaw be enacted if approved to amend parking and traffic by law one nine nine three dash one two eight substantially in the form included as attachment number two to report number E N G two zero two two dash two three, moved by councillor Foster, seconded by councillor Beatty. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, council. We are now moving on to item C W five four. Thank you. And that's Patterson Street Traffic Calming Assessment and Strategy. I believe it, it's similar to the report before us. Councillor McCollum, you report that? You, sorry, you pulled that? Comments or questions, please, in regards to the report?
Thank you, deputy mayor. I was just wondering if we can possibly add something to this. So the south entrance to town is, and anybody who's driven it knows, it's a big hill. So there's, there's a lot of, you basically have to break the entire way down the hill if you're going to stay consistent with the speed limit. So I didn't know, and I know the, the two residents quite well that live on the corner of Patterson and Maple, which is the first crossed street coming into town from the south. Is it possible to have, I think Bond Head has some of them on the seventh right now, those pylons that go in the middle? I think we tried this in one of the newer subdivisions in Alston, but there was too much on-street parking and whatnot. Just the ones in the middle to get them as a visual deterrent while they're coming into town because, I mean, those are, I've talked to those residents so many times, and I actually grew up on Maple Avenue West, and I know how fast people come into town. And then, I mean, when I was younger, we didn't have the set of lights, but coming right up to those set of lights, and it's, it's quite dangerous. It's, it's difficult. You can start at the top of that hill at fifty kilometers an hour, and if you don't brake going down it, you're going over eighty. And that's just letting your foot off the, not pressing on a, on a pedal. So I didn't know if it was possible to have a couple of those, maybe two before and maybe one after Maple Street coming into town because I know it is a real problem.
I, director Vatri, I'm sure that's something we can look at going forward. Did you want to make a comment? You're agreeing? Okay, we'll add that to the report.
Sorry, your worship. Could I speak to that?
Please, by all means.
Through your worship to councillor McCollum, staff, when they were looking at the traffic calming in this area, we did look at it from the perspective of what our traffic calming policy allows for. And because of the volume of traffic on Patterson Street, only frontline mitigations were, were suggested from our own policy, and that meaning that hard infrastructure in the roadway is not recommended, i.e. that's why they're recommending line painting and that sort of thing, or the posting in this case of a permanent radar speed sign. If you start putting permanent fixtures even on a temporary basis on a high volume road, it could create another hazard in the roadway. We'd recommend against putting something like that in that particular location and stick, and keep in mind what the policy says, to use these non, more non-invasive type of traffic calming in those areas.
Thank you for that. Councillor Jab, please.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I'd also remind people that we also have farm equipment, fairly large farm equipment. So something in the middle of the road would be very difficult to maneuver around when you've got a forty foot combine head being pulled behind. Plus, we have trucks that still don't get the message that there is a low train bridge on the seventh. And so those trucks have to back up and turn around and they probably come back into beaten or whatever. So those are the kind of things that have to be considered as well.
Thank you councillor Jab. So, question? Go ahead councillor McCollum.
It's a different topic, don't worry. The white painted lines we're going to use on either side of the street to, to narrow the lanes, will those, can those be bike lanes?
Director?
Through your worship to councillor McCollum, in the, in our, in our background report that we've attached there, what we've identified is that in the future, they can be considered as bike lanes. The reason we're not recommending they be implemented now as bike lanes is because a couple of things. One is that the streetlights are not adequate in the area to provide frequent use or, or all levels of use during all times of day and night, so we're not recommending it. Also, with the extension of the bike lanes from Cedar to Lily as part of the future reconstruction, once that's done and we have improved the streetlights, then you'd have a continuous bike lane from Lily to Main, and I think that's the time to do it at that time.
Thank you, director. Councillor McCollum, you're okay with that? Okay, thank you. Well, then councillor McCollum asks that you'll move the motion, please, that report number E N G dash two zero two two dash two four be received and further that staff be directed to prepare a budget sheet for the implementation of frontline mitigating measures on Patterson Street as described in report number E N G dash two zero two two dash two four for council's consideration during two zero two three budget deliberations. And further that staff be directed to include the work recommended on Patterson Street North, from north of Cedar Street to Lily Street as described in report number E N G two zero two two dash two four as part of the D C reconstruction program. Do I have a second for this, please? Councillor Foster, please. All those in favor, please? Thank you very much. Now, council, I believe that we've moved through the items on the agenda. We don't have any public notices. Thank you, staff. It was great seeing you tonight. Thank you, members of council. Thank you to the residents that have come out tonight and those watching at home. So we do have an adjournment. Councillor Jab? I'm sorry, councillor Sainsbury, did I?
I think we have planning Wednesday night.
Your worship, we do have a planning council meeting on Wednesday night at six P M.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm sorry. Councillor Sainsbury, it was not on my sheet, so I, I apologize. Anyhow, moving forward, we do have adjournment that the committee of the whole meeting of August twenty second, two zero two two adjourn at. Councillor Jab?
Still seven forty eight.
Still seven forty eight. Moved by councillor Jab. We'll have that seconded by councillor Harrison McIntyre. All those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.